All right, I have six o'clock first. Order is to do the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of. We're gonna do budget presentation first. All right, so first order is budget presentation to update us from MS eighty fifty four, Squid and School's John.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Sure, and then just in case anybody else is fine. So, thank you for having me. Just wanted to walk you through a few things. I know some of you've heard this before, some of you haven't. I did page number, the pages this time, which I had last time, so I think it's a little bit better. The second page is just our mission and vision. It's something we remind ourselves of as we work through the budget. It's primarily staff based, but our staff and administrators focus on that. Page three is the state funding overview a little bit. The right side of the top, that looks at how schools are funded from the state. Basically, town valuations, so not your local valuation that's done in-house, but what the town says your your communities, I mean, what the state says your town is worth. Poverty level and student count are the big driving factors. Our valuations relative to the state average went up this year. So relative to the rest of the state, they think we're a little bit wealthier than we were. We still receive more aid than most. So we're about sixty two cents on the dollar, sixty one fifty eight on the dollar. So we receive a healthy state subsidy. Poverty level has actually gone down the last four years in a row, and we've seen it statewide. And I think it has more to do with the federal poverty limits and the way they record that, not real poverty. I think need is, if anything, bigger than it was pre-pandemic, but poverty rate for where we get money is down. And then student count, we've had two years in a row increased student count, but it's not kept up with the decrease to poverty and and change in valuation. Over to the left, just shows you FY twenty four and FY twenty five funding. We are up on the yellow bar, about point four seven percent from the state, about ninety three thousand. We were hoping to be close to inflation, three or three and a half percent, which would have been around six hundred thousand, which really would have made, excuse me, made the local increase far less than it's going to be as we move through it. The other piece in the bottom left is the new school. I think with some of the towns and their reevaluations, it impacted community members differently. And there was a feeling that the new school had an impact, but there's been none. There's no cost of the new school in this current budget. There's no cost in next year's budget. And that's really for two reasons. Most of the school, about ninety five percent almost, it's ninety four point something, is state funded. The remaining difference, which is about four point four million, three million of that we fundraised locally, and we picked up about one point nine million through a CDS grant from colleagues, King and Golden. So we received that about two months ago. So there's no impact, and there should be no impact in this year or next year. And we're actually going to be retiring the Norwood Rock School in twenty twenty eight. And so that's about a twenty year process. So we built it in oh, seven, oh, eight, and we're going to retire it in twenty. So.
But no stream is gonna be in when?
The day. We'll be, we'll be retired.
I was like.
The school's gonna be retired. School's great. We just didn't walk through the other day. It was awesome. Right? We're in in classrooms. So that gives you an idea of of state funding. The next page. I created the next page to look at the way valuation impacts towns. And Norwood Rock has hit pretty hard. The shifting, this is last year's budget. So what I did is I took last year's budget and the numbers over to the left, excuse me, over to the right, are the changes that occurred if nothing changed. So if we just took last year's budget and put it this year, Norwood Rock's up thirty two thousand. Scout Egan's down one hundred and seventeen because of the shifting valuation, and that happens at the state. There's nothing I can do. So what I can do, what the board can do, is we can pour more money in the top, whether that means we're putting in more grant money or putting in more money from fund balance, which will help drive down the local, or we can cut. And we've done both in this budget that I'll talk about a little bit. But any questions on valuation? Because that really does have the biggest impact on, and we're a hundred percent valuation, meaning it's not student count, it's a hundred percent valuation. Is the school, does it ever explore the possibility of mixing that or just just it's the way it was trying to vote? It's, we haven't. And the process is one by which I think you're gonna end, just by numbers, I think you're gonna end up with a stalemate every time, based on winners and losers. But we could. It takes a vote of the constituents or the school board to do it, and I think some smaller towns may ask for that. Currently, we have a bigger split this year than we've had in the past for costs, for, you know, where those costs lie. So it wouldn't be advantageous to Norwood Rock. It would not. It'd be very disadvantageous to Norwood. If I shift to the next page, the FY twenty five budget notes, this explains the budget, and this is a piece that I think is going to be confusing. So I'm on, I'm on page five. And top is the yellow bar. So the overall budget's up to forty eight million, eight eighty six. That is a sixteen point eight four percent increase, which is a very large increase. So we're gonna have to do a really good job explaining, and I thought the newspaper article did a good job in the budget, doing that for us, which was nice. But a big job explaining where does that increase come from? And so the overall budget increase is seven million, which you see just below. Then the new school, of the new school, you know, what portion of that is the new school, which we know is a hundred percent not local? That's four million, two fifty eight, two ninety. So that gives you a two million, seven, seven eighty seven. And then of that, four hundred and three thousand, five oh five is the tech center, and that is a hundred percent state funded. Because we, there's a, it's not always, there are tech centers in the state that are beyond that, and they pay local, but we've always kept it below so that it's a hundred percent state funded. So that gives our increase down to two point three eight, three million, which is about five point seven percent. So our real local increase, when we back up those things that we had no control of, was about, I mean, excuse me, not local, our actual budget increases five point six nine eight. Looking at that valuation shift on the page before, though, and what you see below, that was too big of a local impact. So we worked with the board to try to view ways to decrease that, and over to the left, I talked about that a little bit. One of the things we've done is we've utilized main care revenue. So we're starting to bill for main care, which means my social workers are working with the clinicians that are doing the work with kids to actually build main care and get a reimbursement like a medical model. School people don't like that because it takes people who work with kids, and a big portion of their time has to not be working with kids. But we've done a nice job kind of training around that. Our ed techs have trained to be BHPs. We helped work with that through negotiations. So about, we expect about two hundred thousand dollars in this upcoming budget, potentially more longer term, because we're just expanding right now. We also looked at adding just over one point two million dollars of fund balance. And that's the biggest way we drove down the local increase, so it's significantly below the five point six nine eight. That increase would have been far higher. You know, and it would have been different for every town, but the overall increase would have been closer to nine percent had we not used that fund balance. Our plan right along as we went through the pandemic, assuming that as we all came off the federal and state spending, that we're gonna have that elastic band come back and we'd have less money, was to kind of graduate like a CD ladder down. So we're gonna start with one point two million. I expect next year is gonna be a hard budget, too. And we might be seven or eight hundred thousand. The following year, we might be three, four, five hundred thousand, and then get back to zero. We couldn't do the one point two million every year. We'd run out of money. So we gotta graduate that down. But that's our intent is over the next three years to do that and try to keep the local impact below four percent, below three percent really is our goal, but it just wasn't something we felt we could do this year. Any questions on those valuations? The next page is kind of good news and what we did. So it's, it's a listing of things. And so I just wanted to highlight a few of the good news things that we're doing, and they're also budget related. An example, Universal Pre-K, we're adding pre-k busing, which we've never done. The more pre-k kids you get in when they're younger and you address their needs, they have less costs later on. So it is, it's great for kids, but it's also great for taxpayers in the district to get them in early. Pre-k is funded by the state, so we'll get those kids in. If there's increased kids, there is a revenue there. And when I say universal pre-k, because any child who's four by the date of enrollment, so it's just like kindergarten, October fifteenth, then they count as a regular student, and we get that subsidy, and we partner with KB Cap, and they get Head Start dollars. So we have a program together where they use braided funding to do that. When we looked at what that would cost if it were just us, it's about forty percent more. And so we've got a great partnership with KB Cap. They also reach out to the community and they help families, and so we're super happy for that. We've aligned our curriculum pre-k twelve. We're focused on mathematics this year, and then we'll be looking back at math, science, English, and social studies, all four K to twelve, and as well as the other content areas. Big CTE expansion. I've followed up on that question, Richard, but we've had a major CDL expansion, so we now have two classes with two instructors, three trucks, if you go over to the high school. One of them was donated, another, most of it was donated, so we've had a lot of support. Firefighting, actually, the town of Norwood Rock, Scout Egan and Fairfield have partnered to stand up a firefighting program for us. That'll be firefighting in EMT. That'll be coming back next year. We spent two years trying to hire an EMT to teach that class, and we couldn't. You know, it's just it's, it's lower pay at the school district than you might get in that field, and so we're super excited to have that. Reddington also is part of that to support the EMT side. Computer science and coding, we've hired an expert in computer science who's now going to be doing that job. We've moved math and science over to the tech center so the kids aren't missing out on their high school schedules if it's hard for them, whether they're coming from Madison or MCI, wherever. Our tech center enrollments increase substantially, and that helps us, because every kiddo who comes from our district and goes to the tech center, we get money in both places, for the tech center and for the school district. A lot of flexibility for high school courses. We have the aspire after school program. I think my calls are here. There's a lot of swag that we'd never buy. We were school people, but it's about a million dollar grant over five years to try to raise aspirations. So if you've seen the little stuffies that the kids are getting or have gotten. If you've seen those, they're going out. I have one in the car. I meant to bring it in, but those are gonna be going out to all the kids. So it's stuffies up through grade two-ish, then swag bags up for a while, and then t-shirts after that. And it's really all about getting them to think early about careers, opportunities, getting kids to understand that you don't have to go to college, but you can. Just because some, you don't know people that have, we want to make sure you understand that. Somerset County has the lowest post-secondary degree attainment in college or any than any other county in the state. We're like the fifth or twelfth, I forget. We're in the top fifteen in the country of lowest post-secondary degree attainment. And so we really want to focus on aspirations for our kids. What I like about CTE is a lot of those jobs are here, so the kids can stay. Then the fiscal responsibility piece. Mark's doing the numbers for me, so I'll have him at the district budget meeting. I believe we're close to four million dollars in grants that we've picked up to try to decrease local. We've added three social workers district-wide and other services that are all grant funded. We have done some significant cuts, so that means rightsizing. You heard me say last year, we cut multiple positions from the middle school. Prior to that, we cut a lot of elementary positions. We've already cut three high school positions this year. We've also taken some positions like high school business department and the high school wood shop, and we've moved them over to the tech center because it's better funding formula for us. It's not a cut, but it is effective cut in the local budget. We did reduce some positions. We'd love to eat. The nursing physician was not in the budget anymore. We have two ed tech positions that aren't in the budget. We have an elementary position in Canaan that's not in the budget. All cold, there were twelve local positions, ranging from a two-hour custodial all the way to the teaching positions I just mentioned. There were reductions. We also laddered down, like I said, of the CD laddering off the COVID money, so we've kind of done that the last couple of years. So there's thirteen COVID positions that aren't in this budget as well. The overall budget is the next page, so if you had any questions on where we're spending our money, that's the overall budget. If you look at more in Article ten, that increase is the increase in, you know, that we've seen in debt service. The reason that number's actually a little bit lower than the increase shown on the first page is we were able to retire a little bit of debt as well. And then you see CTE, which is the third more articles, up eighteen point one nine percent. The other areas are pretty fixed based on our impact. If you look at the first, the second page, it talks about how we're about eighty percent. Once you take out debt service, we're about eighty percent people. So if you're gonna cut, you really have to cut there. We're pretty frugal on supplies. I think we've used the federal money to really buoy that up. And so there's not a lot to cut there, although we didn't add things this year. Special ed went up as much as it did, partly because we're moving things under special ed that qualify for special ed, because it's a little bit higher reversal. So your own Melanie Keister's joined us, and she's helped to do some of that work. And so that's why special ed has had as big of an increase as they did. Other instruction is athletics, basically. That increase is just fixed costs. Paint alone, we went up seven thousand dollars to line fields. So there's some things there that that are relatively unexpected that that impacted. Then the last, the last page, the last two pages. The next page shows you are kind of the budgets that I've been involved in, and that's why I include those for you. Long term, our local increase is two point one four two percent. And our overall increase is five point, excuse me, our overall increase is three point four two percent over time. I put the bars over to the right so that you see what it is without the building project and with it. But you'll notice that the local percentage doesn't change. It's the same on the left as it is on the right, because the, because the schools have no impact on local budget, nor does CTE. So we've done well long term, but we're gonna have to pay close attention to it. If next year is a tough year, like I think it will be, we're not gonna be able to drive it down as much as we have this year. And so that'll be something we'll come to you to talk about, but I think it's a, it's a priority for the board to balance high-quality education and what's best for kids and fiscal impacts, knowing the the potential of someone on a fixed income in town can't see their taxes go up a large number. And I know how limited you are as a select board, just like all the select boards, trying to impact that locally. You don't control the school, you don't control the county, and you have relatively small fixed costs. The last page just showed you, because I'm only that, this one, I go out in various places. How do we compare to other districts around the state? The only way to do that really is to just take a per-child average. And the most recent state numbers on the website are twenty two, twenty three. And so here's our per-child spending. We're at about eighteen, six fifty six. The state average is twenty three, nine sixty. So we're about fifty three hundred less than that. It also shows that we spend far more on our schools, and so that's something I'm proud of. So if you look at where the dollars actually go, we spend eighty six percent, eighty seven percent of our dollars on the schools and about thirteen point three one at the district level. The average is thirty percent at the district level. So it's just that where we spend our dollars, I think, is is money well spent. That'll, that does include the COVID money, so these metrics include the the kind of orange bar, the federal grants. That's COVID money, and so you'll see ours change with the COVID money, and when that goes away, September thirtieth of this year, that's our last ability, use any of that COVID funds. And so when those go away, well, you know, you'll just see, two years from now, you'll just see local.
Is, are pupils spending like an eighteen thousand, is that like for their K through twelve, or is that like per year?
That is K, it's just K through twelve, taking all our kids and straight average.
Okay, so that's not like every single year, each kid costs one. It's like, okay, sure.
No, it changes year to year. I mean, it's pretty much going up, but doesn't come.
No, no, every year, it's just the who would impress.
For each child?
Yeah, it's not, it's our total spending.
Like this is budget. Okay.
Yeah, it's not local. So it takes the sixty percent state funding, the forty percent roughly local funding, plus all the federal grants, and that's the cost. And so you'll see there, the federal grant side is about three point seven, three point six, three five million. I'm right at the state where I need to get classes. It's new. It never happened.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's like the.
I assume fat lighting. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, good then. Uh, you touched on it, but the CDL program has put one of our employees, local employees, through that program in a very short amount of time, and zero local costs to us. And it's somebody that we've retained at Public Works and the whole fire department. So that's a huge value. The one I talked to you earlier about is the very same, same situation, some of those local, actually young in connections to our community a long time that we're looking to get into that program to be able to retain, because those programs are costing five, six thousand dollars. And they're having to travel, and the nearest one is Springfield, maybe, down the rainbow.
Yeah, I heard it was even further at the scab meeting, so.
Yeah, so it's tough. And so we've prepared that. I appreciate from administration the response of that. I know I've come on some thing lately. Especially coming from RAC, which I'm gonna thank rest of shortly, but that's just been great. And by and large, the fact here, the local school thing, but. To that end, I want to just touch on a few concerns that I hear in the community. And one of them is related, I think, to what we do a lot here, well, and that's our parent teacher group.
Yep.
I think is unique in your district in terms of what they do, but.
I think they're incredibly active.
Yes, and I love it. It's good for the kids, and they involve us, and we use our charitable veins to be able to support the kids as well, but is it true that we're the only school here in Norwood that does not allow for spirit days due to perceived inequities amongst the students?
Are we the only school that doesn't?
It's extremely only school in stat fifty four that does not allow spirit days.
I wasn't aware. I don't know about spirit days, so I'm gonna follow.
Because for the field day, which is to count sports.
Yeah.
In June, they want to have a drone sent up to be able to take a picture of the test, about M S E S in the school colors. So the notion was that we asked the kids to wear blue or red shirts. And the answer to that was no, because of perceived inequities amongst the students and that the teachers themselves have put that through. And if that's the case, then I think from a community perspective, I have concerns because there are local outers, like the D T T, like the found resources.
What would be the inequity is with wearing a shirt?
That it makes a kid feel left out if they don't have a blue or a red shirt.
Oh, I get you.
But anyway, I've heard that from a number of places, and if that's the case, you know, we would like to be able to support, we will, we can, so the kids can enjoy fun things.
Yep.
I'm gonna skip over that one. No, I'm not going to. Food service.
Yep.
You know, that's a thing we hear a lot with the kids. I've heard it from staff with F school where they're loading, and I myself can smell it. I just, I read the menu in the Sunday paper, and I just feel like there's a lot of opportunity to get kids to take those healthy meals that are prepared.
Yes.
They're just not freezing the plate. And and I think that put a lot of folks safe in that, so.
They're seeing food that's.
Freezing up late. Or breakfast weeks every three weeks and things like that. I mean, we know that our children are not a blanket in the negative, but a lot of children that are in our schools, that's the whole good meal of the day that they get.
Sure.
And so when we're doing things like that, the processed meals, by and large, and I know that we can check all the boxes of the federal government. But I don't think that that's in spirit, what we're trying to do for the kids.
One of our goals locally is to increase locally cooked food, so food that's prepared in our kitchens.
That, right. I think that would be amazing and all work on a lot of different things.
But you're not seeing that. You've heard complaints about that.
A lot of it.
Okay.
Even for New York State.
Yep.
And then I'll skip over that, and I'll skip over them. The last one that I had, we talked about distribution amongst the communities and expenses and whatnot, and then we talked about the price of paint. But the school department, the the school district has gone and taken local dollars, I'm assuming by and large, to improve the ball field at the middle school to allow for the high school baseball team to play there.
Yep.
We're paying probably from local dollars to transport the baseball team for games. The home games are now away, and all the way games are away. And we're transporting the density to at least Smithfield for home and then away, away.
Yes, and.
Does the, does the school district intend to seek reimbursement for all of those costs on behalf of the other member communities from the town of Stew for purchase contract? Or is the school gonna be content standing by and watching them earn the interest on the money which they have in the bank and expect towns like Norwood to absorb this added expense?
So two things. There is no breach of contract. So there was no contract that they have to do this. There was a a purchase and sale agreement, and the sale agreement was that they would transfer a baseball field, and and I would have expected it to be done this spring, and I've been, people have heard me talk about that in the paper. And we got the state to give them one point nine eight million, so there was no district money going to them. Is there a cost to us, for sure? There are some costs that don't exist, like we would line the field and do the work at Memorial, and we paid for those things, so that doesn't exist that did. But I would say the cost is bigger as far as the busing kids and dealing with no homes and and all of that. It's not huge. The the expenses that we spent at the middle school, I would say a little over half of those we would have spent anyways, and it needed to be done on redoing the field, you know, the fence and the infield, the batting cage that we purchased, and the batting cage is gonna be there. That wasn't something that we would have done other ways, but I think it's beneficial. So no. But acknowledging your point, Richard, I think if it gets to a point where that cost is going to be a significant impact that would be spread across the board, then we would want to do that.
So, and I appreciate that, but even at this point in time, I think that the discussion should be had. I mean, there's been a lack of leadership there, and there's gonna be transitions, but I don't think, you know, they're just as conservative a community as we are. They got their practice the same as we do. We balance our budget. We didn't hand out thirty, forty percent increases to our taxpayers last year. They did. So the money's aligned there. They're throwing millions of dollars at their revenue. So if they got it, why are they trying to pay even twenty thousand dollars a year to transfer that expense to communities like Norwood? But then also Mercer and and from the local perspective, I think it would be appropriate to have that conversation with them, because interest rates are great. You've got money in the bank, which they do now.
Yeah. You know? We've, like most things, it's a, it's more nuanced than that, but we've had the conversation that if there's a long-term impact, that we would potentially do that. I, as of the board meeting where we had a lot of baseball parents come to talk to us, so it was roughly a month ago. I've now been involved in Scout Egan's work with the baseball field. So I was there when they met with the state to talk about the conversion. I was there when they met to talk about their timeline, and I assisted with that. I was at the last select board meeting to talk about the bidding, which it looks like they will have ideally, not the next meeting, but the meeting after, they're gonna be hopefully going up, agreeing to go up to bid and move forward with the field. So because I'm involved in that, I'm feeling much better about it. The flip side of that coin, though, and some individuals mentioned it in meetings when on in the select board meeting, is the town of Scout Egan was letting us use their field, their property. We're never charging us a penny. We didn't, you know, for fifty years. And and so you could go down that route both ways and have an argument. I want to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money of all communities and work with all communities. I don't believe there's a big impact to the town of Norwood from anything we've done so far. But if it were to change, if we were gonna be doing this situation year over year because they're not able to come through, that would be a different conversation, and I've worked with the new town manager on that.
So if they're not looking to construction next year, back to the conversation, it might be different.
Exactly. Thank you.
I do have a, in a question, we're looking at just for Norwood specific. He brought it up before, the principal at Millstream, the policy of pickup and drop off with kids at the school changed like during COVID, which was, I understand, parents always used to go into cafeteria, sign their kids out, and they would wait there for them, and they'd come and do it. That changed, and since then, even without COVID, whether it's two below zero, pouring, seeing rain, parents have to just stand out there for anywhere between ten to twenty-five minutes, just waiting for their kids to get sent out. Is that like? I I was told there that it was because kids deserve their privacy in case they pull a nutty in the hallway, so no one watches them. And.
Yeah.
Like, like as a parent, I'm just glad it wasn't my kid. I don't care, but like, that was never the case before, and I just know that sometimes that's, you know, the parking there is atrocious. People park in five lanes, up all the, I mean, it's crazy, but then when you get there and it's like windy, sleeting, and you're just standing out there soaking, running wet, and like, you're just like, okay, why can't we go in?
Has it improved? We addressed this at the start of the year. I had a conversation, and I've been told it's improved from the start till now, as far as staggering times. So it's uncommon for a school to have the parents come in and get the kids for that dismissal. It is common for them to wait in their car or have students get dismissed of the car at that age. That's the more common approach, the way we did it.
We had to get out and like sign them out on a piece of paper that's like covered in plastic, because it's raining, and then you just stand there, wait for them. And we never did. I mean, years and years and years, we just went in, signed them out on that sheet, and then.
I think the best way to handle that is to take that active PTG group and have a meeting after school and talk about it. Because I can't speak to that, but I know.
So it's not the district policy, it's the school making that choice.
The school's choosing the logistics of the way they're doing it, but in all, most all the schools, the parents don't go in to pick up the kids. They pick them up outside, yeah. But it's different at every school, so I'd have to, that's not something I'm super knowledgeable about at every school about. I know I'm knowledgeable about Bloomfield, because I was there this week, and so I see that, and it's not unlike what you described.
Yeah, okay.
But I, but we can probably do it better. You know?
Yeah, no, there's not.
What you described about standing out in the rain, I would think we could have a better plan than that.
Yeah. Yeah. At worst, no.
Please don't put a pencil over the place.
Maybe it's right that it was a table, it was super easy, like it never was an issue.
Maybe there's a way for us to do things differently, so the cafeteria is the pickup. I don't know. We did add, add after-school programming, never had with the Alphon, and so they've taken up space, and I don't know if that has a piece of it.
No, not three months, I'm sorry. But you're here, I'm one year.
I will come anytime you call, you know.
No, that's okay. I usually reach out. No, that's okay. I usually reach out. Uh. With regards to pickup, that brought up the school resource officer.
Yes.
And that has been a very positive addition. I know.
He's been murdered.
Taxpayers, but, uh, it's been a nice addition for us to have.
I agree.
On that good perception, so very good, uh, addition there, but the school pickup.
Yep.
I don't know how far this gets, but. We have had a number of motor vehicle. Human. Issues, people hitting people in the crosswalks within inches of children, um, more than twice. Most of the times we had a woman come through a month ago maybe, um, and just. Notes about he just went like crazy. And so I think that when she speaks about the pickup routine, people are coming in there and you have to realize that the parents is more diverse than the kids are. Uh, that because of the way that it is and the chaos that's created there, I think you're causing behavioral problems with adults.
Yeah.
And it's putting other people in danger.
That's something I know we've doubled the duty coverage, so.
Well, you can't like double park in it. Like they're so lazy, they won't park down like they'll literally park behind people. So you're sitting in the kitchen waiting, you're like. And I can't even go anywhere, cause someone's parked a pickup truck and gone out to like, what, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
It's the after-school program.
Yeah.
And that is, I understand that it's meeting the need to folks within our community. But I don't feel necessarily from what I've seen, my involvement with the town and, and brand. That it's maybe the most efficient use of the space that we have.
Okay.
When you are taking up the time to magazine in the cafeteria and the stage area. And then I've been discouraged. I don't pay taxes here, but it's simply up to send tax bills. To see the level of care that is taken care of in their primary space. It's filthy, it's disorganized.
In the space on the stage?
Yeah, and it's discouraging to see that that's what is happening. You know, with the trap on the other side of things, that's taxpayer property and we need to maintain it. And that's not a perception that I get from that. And when they're in the gym or anywhere else, I just, I don't get that feeling bit.
Okay, I've seen about it. I've seen improvements on that. I was in there this week. We did a board walkthrough and it was.
But it's, I just, when, when my rec program gets bounced around.
Yep.
Our elections get bounced around and we feel like we're in inconvenience. What they're telling us, we're in inconvenience. As much of the program can have a positive impact in the community, it's an negative impact in the community.
Okay, it's been a huge positive for parents, like during vacation week when they can't.
Right, I get that. It costs the child cares.
Yep.
Crazy, but. It can't come for the gain of, of very small few with the expense of everybody else.
I think we, yeah.
There has been with, I know the fall specifically when kids were for the rec or were practicing in the gym. I know it happened to my kids several times. Others, they get locked out, they go and they come out to get something and. Whoever's running it would take the thing out and tell them they can't get back in and they're calling me on the phone back where they had it, like they won't let me back in, but it's like, wow, why would you? Obviously the kids, just come basketball shorts.
Yeah, so that's just communication management. That's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, those conversations have been had.
Yeah, that, yeah.
For sure. So what I would say is steer people to the office. Talk to the principal. If they don't get recourse, call me.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay, I will look for a motion on the review and approval of the minutes from April seventeen. Ooh. About a second. All right. Um, so all those in favor? Discussion on the minutes from April seventeen? Done? All those in favor? That's everyone? All right, we'll move on to members' reports.
I'm all good.
I'm good.
I don't have anything either.
Yeah, I tried to go for it. Uh, the Wait Street property where the building burned, that work is now complete. The ninety-day notice, uh, for redemption on the foreclosure has been sent. Um, last week, the week before, legislature down to Augusta put more regulations into place for us to have to jump through in terms of disposing of that property. Uh, we're still on track. What they've done is they've taken away some administrative fees and they are really iron that we use a realtor. This, no, if fans of us about it, the person can't wait, they have to use a realtor. So, uh, we'll get onto that later in the meeting, but. Um, that was a little discouraging just because of the energy and time that it takes to, to move those along, but. By the end of July, we should be ready to move, but those to market if they have not been redeemed. Uh, we replaced two double windows here in the front office. As a result of that, we pulled the bulletin board off the front. That's all rotten. It's an eye sore right now. Building's getting washed tomorrow and then a new bulletin board should be here next week, but, um, it was kind of an unexpected expense for the building, but. Uh, one of the windows has been popped for a little while, so the signal pain and it just needed to get done. So. Uh, we did that this last week. Planning board meetings canceled for this month. In June, they're gonna start an ordinance review. The chair's asked for that. They've not done that. Probably since I've been here, uh, so that should be good, at least, uh, processed there. Tip advisories, they got it for the day after Memorial Day. We'll see if that one holds. A lot of notices going out, uh, for sewer. Um, I've got thirty-day notices. Next week, I've got automatic foreclosure notices. A little later in the month, uh, we'll send the liens and then I also get tax courtesy notices, which are the free. We don't charge for them. Um, you didn't pay taxes last year and if you don't pay in the next thirty days, you're gonna get. Eleven dollar and sixty-five cent charge on your account and that just sends people furious. So, um, we've been doing those and hopefully that'll be productive, but. Library trustees, they even, uh, moved their meeting time up to three o'clock. And they also have a, uh, children's author program this Saturday at ten thirty, uh, at the Mercer Library. The new playground chips, those are getting covered by FEMA, those will arrive next week. Uh, the new adaptive playground equipment, I received shipping notice on that. That came through with the grant with New Balance. So ideally, we're gonna install that with in-house staff and then plan something in terms of ribbon cutting. Once that's complete, to coordinate something with New Balance, is the condition of the grant. Uh, and that surveillance at actually Park are up and running now in the trail maintenance building. The building itself is complete. There's some residual groundwork around it that's gotta be done, but things are looking really good down there. The FEMA site visit was the Friday after our last meeting. We went to look at, uh, an area that had washed on the shoulder of the road, a culvert. Woodchips at the playground and then the building that flooded and that was, you know, five hours, um, to go and visit those sites. It was absolute federal bureaucracy at its best. But we came out where we needed to be, so, um, anyway, uh, that's moving forward. Now instead of one project category, I've got, I think, five. I'm having to bucket all my expenses into is what it is. And the Uso Park building, that swap was done at the last meeting. Insurance claim is gonna cover, uh, most of the contents. And if not all the contents, what doesn't become there will be covered by FEMA, so, uh, that's all good news there. Uh, public works, the Father Row Road, that's where we lost that one lane three years ago. And then the Sandy River Road, which was a preventative, uh, stabilization project. Those are gonna be open up to bid. Um, the notice should be published tomorrow. Uh, there is a. Pre-bid meeting next week. Bids will be due the twenty-second, ideally before you on June fifth, so that we can, uh, hit the construction period of. July fifteenth through September fifteenth, to get in water with that. So that is the big and pricey project. It's obviously tooling there, but, um. That should be paid for with, uh, congresswoman directed spending. The field day, that's not the school's field day, that's our field day for getting all fields ready and spread. It was a phenomenal success. Um. Kids, adults, everybody there, a bunch of equipment, it came out really great. I was over there last night and things looked amazing, so. Uh, thank you to everybody there. Also, thank you to, uh, Matt Everett and Scott Libby, who were finally able to get water into the shack. And I worked the shack last night. It was one of the big ones.
My job, everybody.
Uh, and the last thing that I have is the sewer commission's gonna meet on Monday, May thirteenth at four thirty. That's been planned. Uh, but they're gonna hear a presentation from Oliver Associates, uh, the overseeing consultant for the I N I study, talking about the methods. Stages of completing the study as well as estimated cost. It should be pretty informative, but I'm also guiding really, um, the. Maintenance, on those maintenance, not very good of the department.
So we will look at, um, discussion action on May first, general warrants number eight.
Pushing to approve general warrant number eight. Ninety thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, eighteen cents.
Motion and second, any discussion? None. All those in favor? That's everybody. All right, uh, public comments?
Um, on the. The, uh. Crossing Balmer Zee. Have we got any further ahead on that? Is that gonna be anywhere? Do you think we may have it on the agenda for this year or is it gonna be pushed?
Uh, my guess is it's gonna be pushed probably in large part because of permitting. Uh, the. Uh, company that was gonna be creating the, um, pipe that we were gonna be using was supposed to get me designing plans at the end of March. And I still haven't heard from them, so.
So we're still, it's all, okay.
It's, we're probably ended up forfeiting that grant, a lot of amounts to, but.
But we should really get that.
Was there'll be cost savings on the other side.
Okay, so we're getting. It should be money. What, what we, we should have, what we. The money that you're getting from the. Better government, are we gonna set some aside to help pay for that project? Are we gonna try to fund that on our own next year?
No, we're gonna fund that. But my intention is to fund that on our own next year, because when you have federal dollars, with federal dollars competitive regulations. And so what I, what we're gonna talk about is the road committee and, and staff is using that for the less restrictive projects like. Having or, you know, the improvement.
No, no, just, okay, I just was.
I don't, I don't wanna get me in the water with federal money.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah, good. We got to, and if, if we got a new chair for the night, let's talk speedball.
Two minutes are up.
Tim, I'm just taking advantage of a situation.
Where, where do you wanna put this speedball?
Oh, oh, down by Lucy. I'll tell you what, let's take it out of Upper Main Street and install it down on the River Road. That would make me happy, Lindsay happy. I would be ecstatic.
Not that one, but.
Oh, listen, it could be moved.
So, um, discussion action on roadside moving proposals.
Okay, so we put this out to bid. It was a six-week window if, and we received one proposal from Norwood. Um, Nord Stock Farm LLC. The price per mile quoted was one ninety per mile. This is both sides of the road on that. It's eight feet, not the ten feet. Uh, it also includes the request of one hundred feet on each side of the major intersections that we listed, which are usually state responsibility and. One was for the Beach Hill Road on Burner Road, um, Airport Road, intersections like that. Uh, the price per sunset was seven fifty twice per year. That's the bat behind the flagpole of Sunset View Cemetery. Um, and then he provided you the estimate as to how he calculated the square footage and costs associated with that. The price imposed here is like the what was last year. Last year, they were also quoting, um, a ten-foot, so, um. This being the one. Proposal, uh.
It's amazing, just, you don't, you don't have any idea where to use it.
Sorry?
Less than, or just?
It's gonna be about, I believe it was about twenty thousand dollars. Total.
Total, cause it's just per mile, how many miles did we get? Roughly.
Fifty.
Okay.
Roughly. But I don't know my. Own home into it. Last year, the estimate was twenty-four thousand. With the price that we have on the table, so it'll be. Twenty.
Good, so, yeah, right comparable. It, it, I just have one comment to that. We did not get our money from last year.
No, I did.
So, we didn't get the ten foot. And he did, it was not called me for sure.
The only other thing to kind of aside to this was when Matt and I were working on the agenda last week. Uh, he mentioned that he would like to see me go and explore alternatives for considering doing something like this in-house. So I've started looking at machines that could maybe double for sidewalk and roadside mode or whatnot like that, so. Um, that would probably must have been later in the evening, next, probably next two to three meetings, have something and the road committee ought to be involved in that conversation too.
It, it's. Long overdue. I think for a combination, but it's gonna cost, what, what you're looking at is probably not gonna be. Cheap.
Yes.
Right, and so then it's about funding mechanisms.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause you need a dual, dual purpose and it needs to be that, the machine you're doing sidewalks with right now, there's nothing more to bond with. Let's try to do.
And that needs to replace as well. So it's a matter of trying to figure out, you know, when we discussed it, it was what gives us the most bang for buck. We don't wanna buy. One machine that only does this, one that does that. It makes for some. Yeah. Um, but you know, if it's got a four or five-year complete return investment, then, you know.
It makes sense.
It does make sense, so.
It's forward for this year and plans for future.
Yes, because even if we tried to order something now, we wouldn't have the time to do this, so I think this gives us that bridge to really explore what our options are, um. And then go forward with that. So, looking for, uh, a motion on, um, the roadside moving proposals.
I'll make a motion as proposed.
To accept as proposed from Nord Stock Farm. Do I have a second? That's a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Okay, so, discussion action on the public works acquisition of the sewer pump truck. Yeah, we got the inside.
There's a fire on the sending these on.
Okay, I just, I just meant answer the truck.
Uh, so this came, I mentioned it at the last meeting and that was that. The public works department would like to have a sewer pump truck that's over the sewer plant that hasn't been used in four and a half years. Uh, so I took it to the sewer commissioner, says, what's your pleasure? They said it's, it's been sitting here for four and a half years. We should liquidate. Uh, Tim, the operator, did some homework, which is this hand page here in terms of. Information about the product, money that we've got into it, um, and one, so you can see that we spent quite a bit of money here, um. In the last. Four to five years on this truck. So it's got almost brand-new tires. It's got a lot of front-end work, uh, work was just done to get a sticker, yada, yada, yada. Uh, and the sewer commission said. Sixteen thousand, they would sell it to public works or goes out to bid. And so, uh, yes, public works wants it, but. Public works has more needs, I believe, uh, in terms of equipment and vehicles. And adding another vehicle to their fleet is probably gonna sit outside, but there's no inside space, probably not a service. And is it worth sixteen thousand dollars to have that extra vehicle? But we already have a truck that we're using just for calcium and water. Um, the only difference is that this would allow you to pump, if you were out seeing whoever, you would have come back in the town and go back out. From my perspective, I don't think that the department would get its monies for out of it.
But I don't cast for sixteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
Back and forth.
Right.
And that is a nineteen ninety-four truck, so I know.
Not to take away from it, it's in very good shape. And we do have people in a tall part of prices that were comfortable putting a minimum on it. So, uh, my recommendation would be for you folks to put this out to bid, um, with the minimum bid.
All right, so the, the. Public Works. Wants it?
Well, they did, but when I, I spoke on the forum about it and, you know, the value of a vehicle, the cost of a vehicle. Maintenance and, and when you put calcium in a vehicle, it's gonna rust. And, and that's what we're seeing with the current truck that we have now. Um, I just. They understand that. But they understand the cost of the benefit. Obviously, if money was an issue, they would want it and they would have it, but money is an issue. And so. For what it would be used for, I don't think that there's value. We're also looking, uh, at a piece of equipment to go on the back of the red truck that would help with calcium here and there. Uh, that hopefully will be funded through the TV grant, but it's abused for the real shit.
Yep, I make a motion to put the nineteen ninety-four international. Or, I don't know how to say that.
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred sewer pump truck out to bed as presented.
Do we have a second? All right, all of us, in, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, all right, so, discussion action, propose agreement regarding overweight permits for DOT products.
Okay, uh, this is, I would say a formality, but the last time one of these came before us. We did not prove it and it had to do with the timing and location of the project. This project here is, um, Route two one A Madison Road and that's the resurfacing project. Uh, and, and this agreement would allow the contractor with the state to put their overweight equipment in loads on our roads. So, when I look at the roads that would be affected by it, I'm looking at Father Row, which is already fairly poor condition. Uh, and if they do it this construction season, it's gonna have its own obstacle, our construction equipment on there. Uh, and then you've got Solapian Lane. And. Well, I get it, but our roads are pretty good for them, they have a little bit of sand, that's. Uh, and so. Given the nature of the project, I don't think that it's much of an issue for us. And they also will hold on for the town if there's a big issue.
Alright, so if they break it, they don't have a word.
So what's your recommendation on that, as far as the bond? When I read through it, yes. Cause there's, is bond through the contractor too?
Right, I mean, I.
This one is specifically for the town.
In my past experience, you don't need to hold the bond on that. The state will come through and support it. And, and they're all, they're always gonna look at what was. And, and they're all, they're always gonna look, well, what was the original condition of your road? So we can't ask the contractor to come back and fix Father Row or forces, you know, Silvian Lane may be another issue, but. A lot of districts have been doing a pretty good job of taking that, but obviously, so. I, I think that just relying on the state is, yeah.
And do we do our due diligence as far as just going up and getting photographs of the road as his prior to or something like that? Just so that we can show this is what it was when we started, or even with the OT saying. That was already like that prior to.
Alright, so I guess that what I'm looking for is a motion to sign a proposed agreement with the DOT project number zero two six zero six nine. Offer as the contractor to use overweight permit and loads on municipal waste for purpose of completing the project.
So.
And a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody. All right. Next item on the docket is discussion action on the real estate agent request for proposal insurance.
All right, so this stems from. Taxpayer property. Actually, for sewer use charge, not paying the sewer use charges, and we're gonna have to use a broker. And so, we've got some that live here in town, we've got based here in town, I don't know, yada, yada. Candidly, the cost of it doesn't matter, uh because that's gonna be a deal to the property. But ideally, you know, if there is some flexibility there, favors everybody, because if we were moving on a real estate transaction or whatnot. I would think that we probably wanna use one that we had a good relationship with, so I think that there's some uh. Consideration given credits there, but um this is something I took four or five different ones from around the state. Most of them are just regular operational, but um I did have one that was more focused on the disposal of foreclosed properties. Um and pretty much the area that I highlighted in on is the minimum qualifications of the proposers. Uh in with standing knowledgeable about, or market knowledgeable about public real estate records. And a, a good reputation, and then that really translates into uh the evaluation criteria. Uh which then includes, if he's got a whole lot of responsibility, so. Uh I drafted this. Just to be open for a month, it would close on the beginning of the thirtieth. Um and then we would be able to look at it in June, if any second, and quickly, the second meeting in June is that we're ready to hit the. So I don't know if you had a chance to review it, if any changes or suggestions, but. So I drafted that.
Yes, so I guess to hold up discussion, can we get a motion to. Um issue the real estate brokerage service or public proposals as presented? Siri, you know what's again? All right, so a motion in a second, uh any further discussion? I think my only would be, once this comes in, I think that where it's not like. Uh big with everything else, it's gonna be tough, cause usually we just pick the lowest. You know, one, if we have like three local real estate agents and they all provide the same services, I think that then we're gonna be in a little bit of a. That we might worry, how do we pick, if they're all doing the same thing, all have experience. We don't wanna have any sort of ambiguity there, we're saying like, I like that one, I don't like, I mean, that would be my only concern as well, is how do we decide who go with, um. That's the only thing I feel like really paraplegic for her, you know, any sort of liability to, you know, transparency and just staying completely. Objective and not letting any sensitivity come into type.
I think part of that would be the resume that they submit. That whatever they document, there's kind of.
A small factor of price, it's gonna be responsiveness, you don't wanna be overwhelmed with material, because if they're overwhelmed, you know, proposal, they're gonna overwhelm you.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
And they, they got municipal references and things like that, I think those will apply.
So we'll just kind of stay by here, I guess, and say, but this is new to us, I just, you know, putting that out there, so we're all sort of, so, okay, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? That's everybody. All right, so the next item here is discussion action on appointments.
Now, there is a vacancy on the Board of Appeals, which was opened by the resignation of Todd Pino, Todd's term was to expire April twenty twenty six. Received a full application of James Lyman to fulfill that term.
So we're looking for a motion on to appoint James Lyman to the Board of Appeals for a term ending in April of twenty twenty six, do I have a motion for that?
Sure.
A motion to make a second, a second, any further discussion?
Just a note on the form, I don't know if this form is on our website, but there's a tape out of interavailability, it says week. And mornings twice, and I think the second one should say weekend afternoons.
That's all. Alright, so any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone. Other business, uh looking for motion to add discussion action on main municipal association legislative policy committee, not making to the agenda. Your motion, alright, do we have a second? Second, uh motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, wait.
So the legislative policy committee is the L P C, what it is, it's the lobbying arm of the municipal association. So every senate district has two representatives, so we're in senate. Three still, I think, and so it's been me and I believe Elaine Owles from Saul's been on. Um it sets the priorities for how they're gonna go to Augusta and advocate for us, whether that's. Uh unfunded mandates, it's the rash of junk that we've had here, throughout the last decade, regulations, unfunded, whatnot, administrative burdens. Uh but it gives us a seat at the table, the larger this is, I'm gonna throw it out back in the morning for my office. Uh and I think it has been beneficial, one of my big things is that, you know, we're taxing for the welfare general assistance to port on itself, whatnot. When really their votes don't outweigh ours, and yet that becomes a priority of the association, so. Things like that allowed by me allocating my time there, when I came here eight plus years ago, that was a complaint, you know, just not here now. So I'm here, but when I, this is three or four hours a month, I'm very excited. But I think it's a return for us in terms of being able to help the association. Hit what they're gonna bring up next.
Okay, so what are we looking for, for a motion just?
Motion to nominate me to the committee.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, that's everyone. Alright, so motion to nominate Richard Bell to the main municipal association legislative policy committee and to authorize Mr. Everett to sign for the board on the board's behalf. It is, okay, to authorize me on the behalf of the board's behalf. Me, Lindsay Lynch, and the behalf, looking for a motion on this. Cool, do I second, alright, motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody.
I'm gonna ask the vice chair, she's willing to give up the floor and. Call for a vote among other members for somebody's affiliate or Steve for the purposes of this next topic.
So moved.
No, no, no. This is a very informal process, because I'm not a chair and vice chair, I'll entertain a motion for. A vice vice chair, somebody's.
I nominate Ronnie as vice vice chair.
Did you do that, so you?
Any further discussion about nominating Ronnie as a sit-in chair?
I just, can we get that added to the, yeah, my vice, vice chair.
Paper, vice vice chairing, we just voted. That's everyone.
Those opposed, those abstained. Now, check and do the next.
Okay, I'm over here.
See the motion on the next one?
To add, yes.
Uh motion to add discussion action on land lease for agricultural purposes to the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So we have received a request from John Lynch, the purposes of transparency, that is the wife of Lindsay, uh the Lindsay Lynch, owner of Lynch Landscapers. Uh and would, has requested to lease the town field, a body in the wastewater treatment plant on Willow Street. We have had that as a standing article in our town meeting warrant, as long as I've been here. The Frolics used to uh farm that land, they were going and seed it down and cut it, you know, and. Um and for the last probably four or five years, it's just gone unattended. Uh John reached out to me a while ago and said, hey, would you have any interest in up being able to use this uh for pasture and for hay? And I said he needed to submit something to you, so he has since submitted uh the request to you, he's also submitted a certificate of liability, which is a particular of that. Uh and he would write the town, the work law, the check for the law, um to execute that lease agreement. But that for us, do you have any questions about that kind of arrangement in this practice, or anything?
How could, but we don't have this? You just have it?
Do, it's, sorry, I just.
Has anybody been maintaining it at all for the last four, five years?
No.
So if you don't do something with it.
Yeah, it's gotta get bush fucked.
I, I mean, there's just no liability to the town.
No, but the, the agreement that we have used before, um puts all liability on them, holds us harmless, and then we hold the certificate. Uh of their insurance, the benefit to. Lynch Landscaping doing it is that they have commercial insurance that would cover those every issue, but I mean, our facility is.
Is it a year to year thing? Can they build anything?
No, I don't know. It, it's literally gonna get haved twice.
In the motion to authorize the town manager to sign a lease agreement with Lynch Landscaping. To allow for posturing horses and hanging at the wastewater treatment facility.
Any further discussion?
Um. It's fine that it's part of the wastewater treatment.
That's the only.
We have the motion for me to come back in and chair?
Oh, hey, yeah, yeah, she's good, she's welcome back here in the audience.
Alright, so.
If we discuss the fact that I pay for that.
Okie dokie, so motion to add discussion action on release of town owned property to the agenda. Do I have a second? Motion in a second, any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Uh this item is related to eleven Everett Street, uh which was foreclosed on for nonpayment of sewer use charges back in December. Uh reached out to by a stakeholder who paid all of the balance. Um so I kind of related that and they ended up with a small overpayment on their, on their account. Uh and the condition is that it gets dated back to the person whom it was taken, so there's really no issue here. Um it's just gonna clear this one more property off our books if we wanted to send to Realtor. The town has been made whole.
Where is this property?
Eleven Everett.
Yeah, but like, where is that?
That's up uh beyond the donuts on the right.
Is that on the corner?
No, no, sorry.
Is he still alive?
We're not gonna talk about members of the public address.
So we're looking for a motion to sign that quickly indeed, releasing the town's interest in property located eleven Everett Street, map is thirty five, lot forty three, did Jamie K. Vicka, the party promotion probably was taken. For the payment of all back taxes, sewer use charges, fees and requirements and allowable expenses, looking for a.
So.
Second, second, motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody. Alright, so motion to discussion action on MSAD fifty four warrant and notice of election, calling mainsville administrative district number fifty four budget validation referendum to the agenda. Second, second, so motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
This is rather a formality uh to sign off, we have to counter sign warrant that they have calling the school budget here. Uh this doesn't support the budget or anything else, just it's a formality at most.
So we're looking for a motion to counter sign the MSAD fifty four warrant and notice of election, calling mainsville minister number fifty four budget validation referendum. Second, uh any further discussion, all those in favor? That's everybody.
Re discussed.
Alright, so we're looking for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one M R S A four oh five to discuss potential real estate acquisitions. That's motion in a second. Is there any discussion on it, don't we do that in executive session? All those in favor, so we need an executive session. That's everybody.
Board did not make any decision tonight, so for the interest of data and recording, we're gonna shut the recording right now.